Before we begin the meeting, we're going to excuse Rick Hendricks this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agendas listed? A second? All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed? Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next up on the agenda are superintendent comments, Dr. Dent.
Hi, good eve, can you hear me? Steve, you okay? Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. We are celebrating Music in Schools Month, which is such an honor and privilege when you see local school districts cutting their arts programs. We are very proud of all of our performing arts, visual arts, all of the arts, and we are committed to keeping those programs in our district. Here, you know, I did a little research on music because my nephew is at USC in their music program. My niece is working on her PhD in music. So, music is very close to our family as well, and I know the benefits and I know the strengths that can come from this. So, get this, we, you know, we're a district that is taking graduation rates seriously. Students attending high school with a music education program are 21% more likely to graduate from high school than students in high schools that don't have a music program. So, we need to keep that in mind. Teenagers who play an instrument are less likely to have disciplinary issues. Think about that for a second. And then another little tidbit of information I thought was fascinating was students who take music in middle school, and Kelly, you'll love this. Students who take music in middle school score significantly higher on algebra assignments in ninth grade than their non-music counterparts. So, there are so many benefits to music education programs in our schools. And tonight, Ms. Amy Fuller is here to have recognized some outstanding students that exemplify that, so, yeah.
We'll bring up Landon Fuller. Oh, there we go. We'll bring up Landon Fuller, Simon Swai, Carlos Gilamacy, Andrew Newman, and Cole Sage. And we'll give them a round of applause, and I'll tell you what they did. They had to audition with extensive requirements, multiple excerpts, and prepare them, and then judges selected them to participate in various national, state, and international bands and choirs. Landon participated in the Junior All-State Honor Band on the tenor saxophone. Simon participated in the National SATB Honor Choir. Carlos participated in the National Junior High Honor Choir. Both of them were two, one of two or three in the entire state of Washington that were accepted to the National Honor Choirs. Yeah. And our two young men at the end, also, by the way, these four are all from Bonnie Lake High School, and Landon goes to Mountain V Middle School. And at the very end, we have Andrew Newman and Cole Sage, who participated in the Western International Band Clinic, which included people from Australia, New England, with world-renowned conductors. And it's pretty impressive that we have people from Summer Bonnie Lake in there participating. So, can you give them all a round of applause? We have. Yeah, Dr. Dent has water bottles for you as well. So, we'll give you those. We're going to smile for a picture, I believe.
Thank you, and congratulations on your accomplishments. Nice work. We're going to go ahead and just take like thirty-second break. So, if you want to leave, you're welcome to. If you would like to stay, you're also welcome to. So, just transition into board member comments here in a minute. Thank you. Yeah. And then if you would like to come sit, if you're standing in the back and you'd like a chair, feel free. And we will move into board member comments. Does anyone like to start this evening? Paul? Thank you.
Well, I was going to talk about. Going to talk about two things. One, I attended the Safety Advisory Committee. It was about a week and a half ago. So, that, that has several subgroups, and it's working its way through all those subgroups. And I tried to attend as many as I can. I do miss some, but I do try to attend them and report. But I caught a break today because on your agenda, and you can go online, I believe, and click it, the hyperlink there, and actually read an update, which would do a better job than any oral report I can give you tonight. So, I encourage the rest of the board and the public to do that. The other item was, I was able to attend the production of "Radium Girls" over at Sumner High School. It was fantastic. I brought two of these, my wife and mine. I'm going to pass these down, and you guys are welcome to come up. And just the program itself was well done. I mean, the first thing you notice when you get it, you're like, wow, that's nice paper. It just, and that's, it, it, this was the quality of the program that I was able to attend. They put it on for a couple of days, thank you very much. And it kind of goes back to what Dr. Dent said about our arts program. You know, I talked to friends around the state from time to time, and they always say, oh, it's nice that you go to, you know, that your high school and your, your middle schools, and even your elementary schools have, you know, support the arts. Because their experience is not, it only supports, you know, supports the sports or athletics. That's not the case here. I think our district really does strive to meet, to really enrich the kids on all different levels. So, I encourage you to come up. It'll be down, the, the programs will be down by Director Lewis afterwards, and you'll see what these students are producing. And this is actually a club, I believe, you know, right? They, they meet after school, they meet during power hour. It's not a formalized class. So, these are students taking the initiative to enrich the community as well. So, thank you, Erin.
Thank you for sharing. Sounds amazing. I'm going to pass on my comments.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Apparently, I have a very soft voice. There was a quote in the movie called "Mr. Somebody's Opus", and it was basi- Yes, that's it. I love that show. And I think the quote was something like this, and I'm probably going to butcher it. But if you don't have the arts in your high school, in your, in your school district, there won't be anything to write about. And it all connects, whether it's math, English, history. And I am really proud of this district for the arts programs. It's had for many, many years, and my, my three daughters are very involved in the music program. And what they learned from that and what they were able to go and use further on in their education is something that we're very, very lucky. Not every district has that ability to do that. With that being said, I was so excited to go to the STEM Fair. And it was just, I think, a couple of weeks ago. And the artwork was incredible. The, the different science projects, the young kids on up to the high schoolers were so engaged and very, very much wanted to not just brag about what they were doing. They wanted you to learn something from them, and I really appreciated that. In fact, there was one young man from Bonnie Lake High School that wanted to give me just all this information about robotics so I could take it home to my young children. And I thought, I think I love this guy because my kids are, you know, thirty-two to forty-two. So, it was really a very sweet thing, and I just love that robotics team. But anyway, it was really fascinating, and whether you've got kids that are actively participating in it makes no difference. It's a wonderful program, so I am very grateful it was brought back. Thank you.
Well, the only thing I wanted to comment on tonight was that you talked about graduation rates and what the arts program does to help that. But I also wanted to add on to that, which is that graduation is coming up quicker than we think. In fact, it was, it was kind of more direct today. I participated in the SBLF, the Summer Bonnie Lake Education Foundation Scholarship Program. So, had the opportunity to read some of the applicants today, and that is a lot of kids in our district that are doing a lot of great things. And it was really neat to read about their accomplishments and the things they're doing and what they plan to do after high school. So, that was kind of the reminder, the graduation is around the corner.
Awesome. Thank you for your comments this evening. We're going to move into audience comments now. The Sumner Bonnie Lake School Board welcomes the public to its meetings. Individuals who wish to address the board should sign up online. Comments are restricted to three minutes. Remarks regarding district personnel are not appropriate for audience comments portion of the meeting. David Brower, would you also carry on from there?
Absolutely. So, comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at future meetings. Topics including charges and complaints against employees, employment or dismissed law personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and other parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers, registered speakers, have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand the following guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous, professional. Please refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening, or defamatory, defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comment. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designee interrupting or ending the comment. The audience pro, comment process is as follows. Speakers who registered by noon, March fourteenth will be heard. If you're providing in-person public comments when your name is called, please come up to the podium and state your name. If you're providing virtual public comment when your name is called, you will be promoted to panelist. Please take yourself off mute before you begin speaking. Address comments to the school board as a whole. You will have three minutes to speak. I will signal you when you have one minute remaining, and I believe we'll also be using the timer on the TV behind me. Our first audience comment tonight is Terri McCoy.
First, I want to agree with the board completely about the, the arts. I'm so thankful that our district has had it for years and is so successful. Good evening, Superintendent Dent and each of the directors. I thank all of the directors here tonight for your work on behalf of Sumner Bonnie Lake School District and also Richard Hendricks, who isn't here tonight. A couple of years ago, I decided to learn more about Sumner Bonnie Lake School District because I cared deeply about education and my community. I kept hearing the school board wasn't listening to the parents' concerns. Yes, sometimes it appeared as if the board wasn't listening, and at times, maybe you got tired of listening. Maybe it comes with the job. You are human, not an excuse, but simply reality. What I found is you do care and you do your best. Can you do better? Yes, we all can. There are many examples of your work I'm thankful and proud of. Then there are examples I don't agree with and I'm not proud of. I also realize the more informed I get, there is plenty I'm not even aware of. I'm hoping our community will begin to see the value in attending these board meetings, to understand how you want to see your promise fulfilled, and to hold you accountable to it. The promise is, quote, "We will know, value, and support every student, helping them graduate ready to pursue a promising future," unquote. This leads easily into the discoveries and concerns I learned off the OSPI website, specifically for the state report cards given to every school and every school district in Washington State. The following information is from the school year 2021 through 22. And again, I wish, I wish that these report cards could include the arts. I really do. So, what I discovered about attendance for both high schools, it was under sixty percent for that year. For the three middle schools, it was under sixty-five percent. That's concerning. The results for standards met for ELA for both high schools and the three middle schools were between fifty-six percent and seventy-six percent. Again, concerning. Results for standards met for math for both high schools and the three middle schools were between thirty-eight percent and fifty percent. That's pretty alarming. Last but not least is science. For both high schools and the three middle schools, scores from met standards were forty-six percent to sixty-five percent. As I've read these over and over in preparation for tonight, I have many questions. Some may have simple answers, but most probably don't. That's okay. Life is full of the same. As we work together for the students, families, and community, the promise you have for yourselves may become the promise we all share. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Becky Conway.
Good evening. My opening line is never compromising my integrity because once you do, you never get it back. I want to thank you. My grandson's graduated from Sumner, participated in basketball, lacrosse band. You couldn't miss my grandson, six foot eight, the only one, six foot eight, playing a trumpet. I'll go quickly. I am not here as your adversary. My husband and I moved here in 2015 from King County. At that time, it was such a breath of fresh air, and we were able to enjoy that last few years of our grand, Sumner educational and athletic academics. One graduated pre-COVID, the other during the worst of it in 2021. We weren't allowed to his commencement cer, ceremony, where he was valedictorian, letters and everything coming up here tonight in varsity, and our one grandson's many, many scholarships. He is now in pre-med at Grand Canyon University. So, they both took off to Arizona, and neither one of them are coming back. My heart is completely broken over that. I just found that out. So, I have been trying to attend these meetings because I feel like I have to be an advocate for my grandchildren. And I don't, we have eight of them. I don't want any more of them to tell me that they're not coming back to the state of Washington. I attended a PUEALAP School Board meeting, and I wanted to address SB five-five-nine-nine and the thirty-two-eleven policy. As instructed, we got there at five-thirty and found all the spots filled by advocates supporting the bill. One teacher boldly spoke of how some of their students informed their parents of their desire to transition and were kicked out of their homes. The teacher stated that the only thing that they could do was to suggest which bridge was the safest one to sleep under that night. If this teacher is still employed by PUEALAP and is a mandated reporter, I would wonder how and why. Have we thrown all sense of decency in the law out the window to support an agenda? I have made my mission to inform parents in this district of what SB five-ninety-nine, fifty-five to find that no parents actually know what it is. I don't know if you guys, maybe it's by interpretation of what we think that it does mean. But anyway, if people don't know, SB fifty-five-nine-nine has certain people's capacities to remove a child from their home, be placed in a secret location without parental knowledge, and the parent cannot have access to their child for seventy-two hours. If I'm wrong, please tell me. I advocate for all children, regardless of their sex, religion, race, or otherwise, for their safety, dignity, and self-respect.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Tracy Brennan.
My name is Tracy Brennan. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a teacher at Bonnie Lake High School, and I live in Director District Number Four. I'm here to speak in support of Board Policy three-two-eleven, gender-inclusive schools, which have brought forth at last month's board meeting. The first sentence of the policy states, "The board believes in fostering an educational environment that is safe and free of discrimination for all students, regardless of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression." This is a huge paramount, paramount statement in thinking about recent statistics from the Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ youth mental health. Here are a few of the statistics that show how critical this new policy is to our students. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. Nearly one in five transgender and non-binary, non-binary youth attempted suicide. LGBTQ youth who live in a community that is accepting of them reported that significant lower rates of attempting suicide than those who do not. LGBTQ youth who found their school to be affirming reported lower rates of attempting suicide. What this boils down to is that our LGBTQ2S-plus students have a tremendously higher risk of not making it through adolescence. And we need to do better to show them that we are affirming of who they are. Schools should be a safe place for all students, and especially for those who don't feel safe and secure in their own homes. They come to us as educators and confidants to provide that beacon of hope to not give up. Our jobs aren't just to educate, but to provide acceptance and belief that their lives matter. I have firsthand seen the impacts that I've had on students in my building. As I walk around the building with simple things like my lanyard, pins, and shirts, students who I don't even know come up to me in the halls to let me know how much they appreciate the small token. They know I'm a safe space for them. They know that they will be protected by me. They know that their lives are worth living. I'm looking forward to the comprehensive training for staff and volunteers of our district to maintain a safe, civil, respectful, and inclusive learning community to ensure that all of our staff and students feel secure when they walk through our doors. This policy and its implementation will help save lives.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Gabriel Freed.
Alrighty, let's see. Perfect. Alrighty, good morning. Good morning. Oh, boy. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriel Freed. I am the school registered nurse from Bonnie Lake High School. I have come out of my hermit hole to talk to you this evening to talk about how awesome it is, not first of all as a nurse, but as one of our school's GSA advisors. For those who don't know, GSA is an acronym for our Gender and Sexuality Alliance. And let me just tell you, this club is awesome. To be able to see our students walk into those doors, they act so much differently than when they do, when they walk into my health room. There is a sort of guard that they have up when they're not really sure how to approach. But when they walk through the doors into our club for GSA, that kind of just melts off. I see these goofy kids that can actually be authentically themselves. And oh, my gosh, like, that's what we want to do as a district, right? We want to see these students reach into who they are as themselves. And right now, I do understand that we are moving forward with policies so we can try to help implement this more into our district, and I'm really excited for that. This time especially, at least for my population in high school, is a time that our students are trying to wrestle and overcome the social landmines that is high school and puberty and everything else going on there. So, knowing that we have policies that are coming up to help students feel comfortable in whether that be whatever restrooms that they use, whatever locker rooms that they use, to even have this training for our staff members to just be there and affirm our students in their own identity is fantastic. We understand that, and as my colleague Tracy brought up, at this time, when we have gender-affirming care implemented into our schools, we see these results. And if our goal is to help our students continue on their journey as their own self, they can only do that when they can explore this identity in a safe space, which is what these policies will continue to do. So, anyone who is listening right now, thank you so much if you're even thinking about this. We can do this so we can make our schools safe for our queer students. I want to see this moving forward, and I'm going to do my very best to also help protect and help these students and nurture these students so they can become the person that they want to be. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is James K. McLeimans.
Kelly McLeimans, Bonnie Lake. I want to take a moment to thank you for your service and hard work for the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. It's much appreciated. I attended the school board meeting on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. After that meeting, I spent a significant amount of time researching and trying to understand how Policy thirty-two-eleven came about. I reviewed the RCWs concerning the directorship, WASDA, discrimination, the Office of Equity, the Washington Professional Education Standards Board. I also reviewed the material available on the WASDA website regarding Policy thirty-two-eleven. Overall, I would give you a grade of B-plus for your effort in adopting the policy. This is difficult task, we understand. You could improve your grade if you updated the policy to use a time-assigned bathroom policy that's provided for in the RCW. This is a preferred approach since some students will request privacy. And then by just segregating themselves by that privacy request, it will result in them being placed in a position where they'll most likely be bullied. Failing to recognize this can be seen as a failure to adhere to cultural competency as defined by RCW twenty-eight-eight-four-fifteen-four-thirty-three. That says, the RCW says, "Cultural competency includes knowledge of student cultural histories and context, as well as family norms and values in different cultures, knowledge and skills in accessing community resources and community parent outreach, and skills in adapting instruction to students' experience and identifying cultural context for the individual student." I would like now to turn to an even more difficult topic. I have been made aware that statements have been made, that the statements made by the director on the February fifteenth meeting have been considered transphobic by individuals. Those individuals have even organized a response against the director based on this belief. I'd like to remind the director once, directors once again, that RCW twenty-eight-eight-four-fifteen-four-thirty-three, which very clearly indicates through the definition, the district and staff should be tolerant of the cultural context. The local cons, cultural context for Sumner Bonnie Lake is very conservative basis. As I demonstrated last year with my analysis of the voting trends for the area regarding SATS education and leadership, that's undeniable. A failure to recognize that culture is most likely due to an activism in the staff. I would ask that investigation into the training materials be undertaken, determine if the staff has been trained to understand and respect the cultural context of Sumner Bonnie Lake. Given the RCW's intent and clear definition above the activism approach, it's clear violation of the local culture. Even the makeup of the board is very clearly more conservative than activism.
Our next audience comment is Teresa McLeimans.
Thank you. Let me bring a little simplicity to the conversation. I suggest that love is a solution to all problems. And since our world is full of problems, love should be sought after. Love should be studied and pondered in our hearts. Why should we seek after love? Because in all the problems that we face, love brings purpose and allows for personal healing and growth. In love, we are not victims. In love, we are overcomers. In my life experience, love continues to heal me, and in areas of my personal angst, I am being set free. Love has embraced my soul and has accepted my struggles and helps me to overcome things that I thought would imprison me for life. Love is my pain reliever. Love trusts, and love encourages. In love, there is, is, there is strength, and in that strength, there is beauty. And that beauty goes down deep, deep into the cracks of my once-broken heart. Now, those cracks are progressively being filled with silver and gold resins. Now that brokenness is a work of art. Love makes everything beautiful in its time. Let us unite in love and take the time to understand what it truly is. Respect is love's closest friend, and they walk hand in hand. In them, there is freedom and acceptance. In them, there is freedom and acceptance. Love does not bully or keep secrets. Love respects the minds and the hearts of those of them around them, even though their opinions are different. Love respects parental rights over the children who they lovingly are responsible for. So, how do we express love? How do we support the parents of this culture and in our community to help them raise their loving children in the way that they respectfully want to? So would love tell a child that they should trust their feelings instead of trusting the principles of truth based on reality? Would love encourage children to keep their gender secret from their loving parents? Would love encourage children to live double lives that exclude parents and loved ones from the conversation table if they are wrestling with important gender issues? No. Love would encourage healthy conversations, and it would encourage healthy families. Security is love, not secrecy. So, I challenge you to review your staff's cultural competency to ensure that they are sensitive to the culture of Sumner and Bonny Lake. All district staffs need to understand this. Thank you.
Our next audience comment is Christina Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Christina Cooper, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. Eighteen minutes and thirty-six seconds. That's the amount of time a board member was given to spread fear and misinformation pertaining to transgender students at last month's board meeting. I'm being generous in saying that the first five minutes of what he said was within his role as a board member in sharing his opinion on the proposed gender-inclusive policy. However, everything thereafter was reckless, irresponsible, and even further jeopardizes the safety of transgender students. What he said was based on an admitted YouTube rabbit hole he ventured down. Nothing he said was backed by science or peer-reviewed studies, which is not what I would expect from a representative of an educational institution. His attempt to propagate fear among parents and cisgender students, sharing bathrooms and locker rooms with transgender students, is appalling. Locker rooms are monitored by staff, so no student should be in danger, and if they are, it's not a gender identity issue, it's a staffing issue. He also claimed that transgender students are deceitful and shouldn't be trusted. Roughly fifty percent of transgender youth contemplate or attempt suicide. This has contributed to the lack of family acceptance. If a student has not come out to their family, it is often because they don't feel it is safe to do so based on their family's belief system. Transgender youth are much more likely to be abused by their immediate family based on their gender identity and face family rejection resulting in an over-representation in foster care, juvenile detention centers, and homeless shelters, resulting in higher likelihood of substance abuse, depression, and suicide. Therefore, transgender students that are out at school but not at home are not being deceitful but have developed a trusting and nurturing relationship with their educators and peers at school, which would possibly be the only thread keeping them alive. I could go on with literally thousands of years of gender research on gender expression, but I don't have the eighteen minutes and thirty-six seconds to do so. I am asking that the board put their words into action and publicly censure the board member as his words and behavior go against the district's promise to know, value, and support every student.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Melissa Russell.
My name is Melissa Russell, and I am a Sumner High School alumni, and I have three graduates from Sumner High School. I have five currently enrolled students in the school district. I was very disturbed watching the school board meeting last month, and wish I was here, unfortunately. I was not. I actually have children who wanted to come tonight, and I don't feel comfortable with them being here with that type of thing being discussed in front of them. I really am worried that they will lose faith in their district, who they actually love their schools. I don't want them to know what's been said here. It's very upsetting. I want you to know that I'm a mental health professional. I serve the community. I support early learning programs that are here in Sumner and Bonny Lake. And I second the comments that have been made about mental health for transgender youth. I definitely support the bill. There are lots of details in that bill that might need to be worked out, or people might need to discuss with their children, have some open conversations with them. I do have a transgender student who is attending Bonny Lake High School. He has received wonderful support from the staff there. Some of who are sorry, it's very personal for me. It's very hard for him to be at school. It's hard for him to participate in sports. It's hard for him, and he needs that support. And I don't appreciate the comments that are made about this community being conservative, because that does not speak for all of us. And we have a great group of us who are not conservative, although I do support and understand other people's viewpoint. I have neighbors who are very conservative. I'm very nice to them. We get along very well. But I am not conservative, and I am part of this community, and I've been here a long time. So I just want to say that. The culture is also those of us that are not conservative. I just, I wrote down my notes, but I don't know if I even got to those things. I think it's really unprofessional for a school board member to say the things that were said last month. And I find that very disturbing because staff and students look to the school board as leaders in this community. Very disappointed that that would occur here. It was not professional, and yes, we do not get the same amount of time that he had, went on and on and on. No one stopped him. That was very unsettling. I guess I just want to continue to say that I support the bill. I think that everyone needs to kind of take a breath and think a little bit about what's best for students, what's in their best mental health interest, what's in our community's best interest to be open and understanding of differences. Oh, and my pronouns are she and her. I forgot to say that at the beginning. I still have seconds left. I thought I would go over. And I just want to say that the staff at Bonny Lake High School have been incredible. And he has even played on the football team and had no problems in the locker room, and it's been great. Thank you.
Our next audience comment is Tim Cooper.
Yeah, my name is Tim Cooper. I live here in Sumner. My pronouns are he, him, and his. I am reading this on behalf of Rosalyn Ship, a parent, and she could not be here tonight, but she wanted this to be heard publicly. And she writes, "Racism is not political. I would like to offer my perspective on proposal made by board member L. In the March eighth session, Mr. L proposed the board study and consider adopting an anti-racism policy to help guide the district, in part to help decrease disparities in the way discipline is applied in our school. Almost immediately following his presentation, Mr. L was met with resistance from board member Mr. W, who agreed to look at the issue but also argued that an anti-racist policy is unnecessary as racist behaviors likely would be addressed under the existing anti-harassment and anti-bullying policies. Mr. W stressed the board needed to be careful to not create a policy that was deemed too political. I would like to repeat what Mr. L stated in that moment, which each of us should hear and absorb. Racism is not political. Furthermore, racism is very real and very problematic in our schools. Current district policies clearly are not adequate in addressing the racist behavior as it becomes all too frequent in our district. Her two daughters, who both identify as mixed race, bring home stories from school multiple times each month about white students using the N-word to harass and target black students. I've heard, she's heard firsthand two separate occasions at the Bonny Lake High School where black students were called the N-word by a white student, and when the black student reacted, it was the black student who was received the discipline. How does the district explain that? Maybe the district doesn't fully understand the impact of that word. As explained by the black student, the N-word means be less human. It's a painful reminder of a time when society wouldn't allow black citizens to vote and required them to sit at the back of the bus. In an instant, that word can strip a student of his or her confidence and dignity, even making them feel physically unsafe. Racism exists. Racism is not political. Racism needs to be confronted and corrected head-on. She applauds Mr. W's, I'm sorry, Mr. L's efforts to bring attention to the need for more adequately addressed racism in our schools and urge the boards to move forward in drafting an anti-racist policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is from Samara Deans Phillipsen.
Good evening. My name is Samara Deans Phillipsen, and my pronouns are she, her. I'm a teacher in the district and one of the advisors for my school's Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club. I know many students who need gender-inclusive schools. All kids want good relationships with their parents. And if a kid feels safe, they will share their struggles and explorations with their parents. If a kid keeps their gender a secret, it's because they know that their parents will reject them. No one is in the closet for fun or out of spite. I would know. Some people want those transphobic parents to have the opportunity to correct their children. I'm not talking to them. I'm talking to those who might say, "That's unfortunate, but it's none of our business how people raise their children." But we are mandated reporters. It is our business when our students are being abused. And there is no question that transphobic and homophobic parenting is abuse. I know many transgender students, former students, and adults. I can tell you what will happen if you try to force a trans child to change. The best you can hope for is a kid who grows up to love themselves enough to never, ever talk to you again. The next best outcome is a young person in crisis. Unsupported trans youth are far more susceptible to addiction than their supported peers. And about forty percent of homeless youth are LGBT, whether they were kicked out by people who are supposed to take care of them or they ran away from an environment so hostile that literally anywhere else was better. We, as a school district, say we care about students struggling with mental illness, addiction, and homelessness. If that's true, then we'll do everything we can to prevent students from having to deal with those things in the first place. The last outcome of transphobic child abuse is death. Maybe after years of living a life of secrets, stress, and danger, the depression catches up with them. People have already mentioned the suicide rate among unsupported trans youth. Or maybe their transphobic parent skips the crisis phase and just murders them. That happens. All of these things happen. We don't like to think about them, but they do. I believe that the majority of this board wants to protect the students in this district. Please continue to respect students' rights to control their own personal information. Work with me and other supportive adults. Protect all students. And I still have time. I've seen a lot of that stuff firsthand. I've had students who were terrified to go home when their parent found out about their pronouns and name. I have students who I never saw again when their parents found out. They got pulled out of the school. I don't know what happened to them. I've got students who went through those things. I've visited students in the mental health hospital after suicide attempts. I have seen all these things. I see it in my friends, my family, the people in my life. It's not an issue of viewpoints. It's an issue of abuse in life and death.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Troy Fullerton.
Hello, board members. So my name is Troy Fullerton. I live in Bonny Lake. So I'm here to talk about three things: enrollment, depression, and suicide, and the vaccine adverse event reporting system. First of all, Washington State student enrollment has plummeted since COVID-19 under Governor Inslee's continued seven-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-day-or-two-and-a-half-year emergency order. The governor issued eighty-five emergency orders during the pandemic. Inslee's word was law when it came to shutting down schools and churches and mandating masks to mandating vaccines for certain professions and from ordering businesses to close to deciding when they could reopen. This emergency utilized the shot of a lifetime, including vaccine lotteries with millions of our dollars spent in prizes, including two-hundred-and-forty-nine winners and one millionaire to, of course, lagging state vaccinations. The so-called vaccine, which also was the first shot to offer zero liability, zero liability to any of the hundreds of thousands of serious injuries or deaths that resulted and were reported to the vaccine adverse event reporting system. Depression and suicide. Recent articles have stated that public schools have lost thousands of students during the pandemic, and most aren't coming back. At the same time, homeschooling rates in Washington nearly doubled at the height of the pandemic and still currently sit at about forty-three percent over homeschoolers than before the pandemic. Chris Reichdahl, the superintendent of Public Instruction, stated how there had been a steep student enrollment drops. And Chris Reichdahl also reported that two-thirds of middle schoolers and one-half of high school students reported fillings of hopelessness for a prolonged period. Students have experienced unprecedented isolation, all while adjusting to remote and distance learning. Our children's mental health has seen a tremendous rise in depression, and unfortunately, also many suicides. From December fourteenth of twenty twenty to February third of twenty twenty-three, VAERS has received hundreds of thousands of reports following the experimental vaccine as follows: over one-point-five-million adverse events, over thirty-four-thousand deaths, over two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand serious injuries. These numbers are only a fraction of a much greater total. Most of us never knew of the VAERS electronic database, which began in nineteen ninety, close to the same time as the original vaccine injury compensation program, which compensated tens of thousands.
Our next audience comment is Chris Ijama.
Hello. My name is Chrissy Ijama. My pronouns are she, her. I have three children in the district. Thank you, Dr. Dent, and school board members. I'm here today to discuss two important topics: acquiring an anti-racism school district policy and speaking out against the transphobic comments that were recently made during the last school board meeting. I believe in the mission of the Sumner-Bonny Lake School District to support and nurture every child in the district, to make sure all students have the environment they need to succeed, and for all students to be heard and seen for the valuable people that they are so they can thrive and be successful in the future. In order for the district to do this, teachers and school administrators need tools to be able to do their job to the best of their ability. One such tool is an anti-racism policy. We know that racist events take place in the district. Personal stories have been shared during these meetings, and data has been presented to support it. These events are different than bullying and discrimination. Therefore, those policies do not adequately provide support when such instances occur. If we truly are committed to supporting all students in the district, we must create a policy that addresses instances when our BIPOC students are targeted, devalued, and harmed. To truly support all students, we need to have representatives that value every child in the district, not some, not most, not those that look or act in a specific way. Celebrating each child for the unique individual that they are and supporting them with their specific needs are ways in which students are valued, thereby upholding the mission of the Sumner-Bonny Lake School District. Transphobic hate speech is not. Transgender people face discrimination, bullying, and violence on the daily. According to the transequality.org, transgender and gender nonconforming youth face challenges at home, at school. face challenges at home, at school, in foster care, and in the juvenile justice system. A national survey by GLSEN has found that seventy-five percent of transgender youth feel unsafe at school. Those who are able to persevere and significant have significantly lower GPAs were more likely to miss school out of concern for their safety and were less likely to plan on continuing their education. The actions of one school board member highlights reasons as to why transgender and gender nonconforming youth feel unsafe in schools. The offhand remarks that were made are in direct opposition of supporting and valuing all students and the mission of the school district. Let's create an environment where all students are able to experience a safe environment to learn, grow, and thrive. Adopting an anti-racism policy is one such way to do this. Assuring that the leaders of our district, including school board members, represent and value all of our students is another. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Bo Woodbury.
Good evening. I'm Bo Woodbury from one seven zero seven Main Street. I have taught biology at Sumner High School for almost seventeen years. During that time, I've had the privilege of being the teacher of four students and family friend to three other young people who have come out as transgender. I want to briefly share my experiences so that others may understand why I find these people, like all the students I serve, so worthy of our care and support. Without exception, the journeys of these young people have been difficult. The challenge of discernment about who you really are is compounded by those voices in society that expect or demand conformity and made dangerous by those that taunt, bully, or threaten, and sometimes complicated by uncertain support or even hostility at home. However, after the careful work of that discernment, I have witnessed a consistent outcome that is one of the goals of all religious traditions, including my own. Peace. The kind of genuine around them. The kind of peace that is certainly one of the outcomes we hope for as we teach and support the whole child, regardless of the religious tradition we might follow. Peace, after all, is one of the first words of Easter. For those that are concerned about the biology of the sex and gender, that the biology of sex and gender are simple and straightforward, I assure you that biology is almost more wild and untamed than we think. More full of amazing and beautiful variety than we expect. We must not put human limits on the creativity of creation or a creator. See me for more on that. I have a tendency to go on a bit about how amazing biology can be. For those that are concerned about logistics, I suggest an architectural solution mimicked after the state parks. Individual stalls with a shower and a separate changing area for all. This would provide modesty for everyone. I assure you that this former gangly and awkward fourteen-year-old would have been extremely grateful for that capital expense. We must choose compassion over fear, especially those of us who confess a faith that also reminds us not to fear at Easter. We must continue our tradition of teaching and supporting and caring for and cheering on each child we serve, not just those that belong to a particular group. This is the essence of equality. All are created equal and all must certainly be loved equally by God. I support all of my students and call on this board to continue to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Kristi Martinez.
Board of Directors, Dr. Dent and district administrators, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a parent of a Mountain View Middle School student. I am a third-generation graduate of Sumner High School. And I'm very proud to teach in the community that raised me at Bonnie Lake High School and a member of the Sumner Bonnie Lake Education Association. I heard the comments that were made at the February fifteenth board meeting. I absolutely do not share the homophobic and transphobic views that were shared for eighteen minutes. I do, however, stand with my students, my colleagues, my fellow citizens who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. I thank you for all of the work that you are doing to make our schools more safe and more inclusive for all students. And I would encourage you to continue to enforce the policies that we have in place so that we do better for all.
Thank you. Our next comment is an online virtual comment by Tara Bacher.
Hello, my name is Tara Bacher and I am an educator, a science teacher at Bonnie Lake High School. Um, as an educator for twenty-three years, I have been privileged to work with many students of all, um, genders, sexualities, political affiliations, religions, and everything else you can think of. I'm here in support of Board Policy thirty-two eleven and to share my absolute horror with some of the comments that were made at the last board meeting. Um, I found the comments to be both transphobic and homophobic. And I won't reiterate the statistics that have been shared by many other people here tonight, um, but I will share some additional statistics from the University of California at Los Angeles, um, reporting on this two, two-year study, um, of data from the National Crime Victimization Survey in which transgender people are shown to be victimized over four times more frequently than their cisgender counterparts. Our jobs as educators is to meet all students where they are. And that is no different for our straight students, our conservative students, or our LGBTQIA+ students. It is entirely reasonable for people to be ignorant on topics they're not familiar with. However, as I tell my students every day, willful ignorance is a whole different thing. The comments that were made at the board meeting were willfully ignorant of both science and empathy. Our students deserve the best we have to give them and that requires the adults in their community to learn and grow. And YouTube should not be the primary source of that growth. There is oodles of science, as one of my colleagues a couple of speakers ago, um, referenced, to support all manner of gender and sexuality in nature. No one student is any less normal than any other. And it is our jobs to support them in their truth, in their bravery, and in their integrity. And I thank the board members who have been supportive of this policy and supportive of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Donna O'Rabes.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. My name is Donna O'Rabes. I'm almost scared to speak today because I might be called transphobic. I was here at the last meeting. I didn't talk, but I listened to him and he was not transphobic. He was stating what he believed was right for the students of the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. So I'll finish my talk. I had prepared this the last time, but I had not, um, signed up early enough. As a lesser magistrate, I'm appealing to you to examine the Washington State constitutionality of the gender inclusive policy number thirty. The Washington State Constitution, section four, line, states that all schools maintained in whole or in part by the public fund shall be for control or influence. Sectarian means philosophy or ideal, the ideology, including political, et cetera. If a parent wants their son to be taught that they can be a female and address in front of naked females in the locker room with all their male genitalia exposed and compete in women's sports, that parent should enroll that child in a private school that promotes that behavior. Just a year or two ago, that would have been considered sexual harassment, indecent exposure, or even voyeurism. This policy is harmful mentally. Many scientific studies reveal that four out of five children grow out of gender confusion by the time they are twenty-five. And you can hear it on the news today. They are coming out, these twenty-year-old, um, adults. They actually say a child's brain is not fully developed until age twenty-five and that the idea that transgender youth should have gender confirmation and hormone treatment as a means to prevent self-harm is a myth. That suicidal behavior is a result of accompanying mental disorders such as anxiety, trauma, et cetera. This policy is harmful academically. I just listened to a video of instruction to our local school teachers to implement the gender inclusive policy. What costs in terms of time and money is being used for this? Have you all listened to this? Do you cringe as I do when you listen to it and realize that time given to teachers in service training and taking time away from academics, which is your job, is the teacher's job? And it's harmful physically. I'm not going to be able to finish what I'm saying. But I just have to say, this is unconstitutional. Read the Washington State Constitution. If I have opinions for my children, ideologies that I want them taught and they are not, um, non-sectarian, I have to enroll them in a private school. And, and it's, it's really hard financially. Um, there's hardship in homes, but
Thank you.
Some people can't do that.
That was our last audience comment and concludes our audience comment section. Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and take about a five-minute break and resume at about seven oh six, um, the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Uh, relationship to the district plan. Um, it's pretty simple. We provide healthy, safe and secure learning environments for the student staff and guests. As a tool to improve student performance. Maintain fiscal responsibility. That is a learning curve that we were on every day. And to support the Southern by like school district community. Relationship to board policy sixty eight hundred. Not only are we required by board policy to do the work that we do, uh, we get to do that. Um, it's nice to every day we get to come in and do the work that we do to provide the educational environment for for students and staff. The physical plant, um, that's from the roof to the ground and everything in between. A little bit of background information. You remember last time a year ago I was here, this first, it was the first time I presented to the board. And uh, there will be some differences in the numbers here. I wanted to highlight, so um, I proudly represent fifty eight maintenance and operations staff. That's our custodians. Um, all of our maintenance folks. They care for sixteen schools and fields across the district. It's thirty eight custodians. Twenty maintenance folks. That twenty, well, last time we were here was nineteen. We added a grounds position this year. Thank you very much. As we know, the last few years, we struggled in the grounds department just to keep up, right? And uh, we're proud of the fact that we're getting there. You can see the difference already. I hope you do too. Uh, one point three million square feet of facility um that we maintain. That's about thirty four thousand two hundred square feet per custodian. Again, I used this information last time. The E L C alone is thirty five thousand square feet. So our custodians out there doing the hustle, right? Every day. Three hundred and twenty acres of grounds. That's gonna grow a little bit with the opening of phase one. Uh, that one point three million square feet is gonna grow to about one point four and phase one open. So here we go, right? The puzzle's getting bigger and bigger. Um, you'll notice the sixty four acres per grounds tech. Um, it's about forty and forty eight and a half football fields that each grounds person is maintaining. That number was uh, eighty acres and sixty football fields this time last year. So the one extra grounds person makes a huge difference in that work. Work orders are up nine percent um this year over last. Uh, just growth shows the growth. Our buildings are aging. We're increasing square footage. The demand for service continues to grow and we get to do that. Um, I learned last year, it's kind of fun having these fun photos in there. We like equipment, so we always have equipment photos in there. Um, happy grounds guys doing the grounds work. Uh, the upper picture there, just those who don't know, that's actually two carpenters. Um, our lead carpenter and uh, another in the middle of summer last year, just knocking down the hayfields called grass. And that's particular uh, spot is the entry at Lakewood Middle School. Just trying to get a handle on the on the grass. Uh, I apologize if this slide is a little hard to read, even your paper copies. Um, it's critical information though. This is a number of work orders submitted by month up for the last three years, twenty twenty. Is I don't know if I have a pointer on this. Not that. Not that middle. Yeah. Oh. And maybe that won't work on there, right? Um, so just to highlight, um, the year twenty twenty is the green line that's sort of low at the bottom here. Anybody want to guess what the big dive down was in twenty twenty, right? Covid, yeah, it just killed our numbers. The what would be a darker blue is the middle line. Uh, that's twenty twenty one, the light blue being twenty twenty two. And the point of the slide is to show the growth and the number of work orders every year. It just continues to grow. It doesn't stop. Um, and the the slide gets really complicated when you go back to the beginning of our data sets twenty twenty four, uh, twenty fourteen. Uh, there's too many lines, too many intersections, so. And then I want to highlight also the dip in uh, July. That's when schools are empty and all the summer work begins. Um, so a lot of our preventive maintenance work orders kick out, not necessarily new work. Um, being observed, you know, the needs in the building. That's just the busy time. Uh, average number of work orders assigned per maintenance technician each month, uh, starting at twenty twenty, trying to keep that same window. Um, you can see not only is the demand growing, the nine percent every year. But we've also experienced a little bit of some loss of staff uh, during that time. So the number of work orders per technician is just growing as we go. I thought this was a fun slide. I got a lot of great feedback from this last year. Um, the percentage of assigned work orders is the pie chart on the left. Um, by name, I had no way of putting the the like what they do in that. So I can tell you, um, compared to last year, Jeff Merrill, our plumber um, now leads the number of work orders he gets. I'll explain why that is in a moment. Warehouse is always twelve and a half percent of the work orders. Jeff Merrill's numbers have increased. He's our plumber. Um, you'll notice the bar chart looks like badges, military badges on the other side. The pink is all the plumbing work orders. And then the orange and the red are work orders that are not plumbing, but those are lighting and electrical. Um, we currently have no electrician on staff, so we're asking a plumber. And all those other things that are in there as well. Um, and then locksmith was warehouse always gets a lot. Next one down is Mike Madden. He's our locksmith. Um, that's bars, two parts, lock doors and hardware, keys and locks. Always gonna be a top performer. He's he, yeah, merely. Uh, next one down is Ron Giesemann. That's HVAC. Everything he does is HVAC and a little bit, there's controls on each end of that. Um, that's just, that's huge. He is right now our only HVAC technician. And um, he's soon to retire this summer, so. Uh, we'll talk about a little bit about that too coming up. And then we work our way down. It's just our our top performers, same guys, carpenters, um, the general maintenance folks. I want to highlight the very, very bottom. Um, that's Madison Sipple. Some of you may have heard about, um, we have an energy fellow now working in the maintenance department who's um, basically scrutinizing every utility bill we get. And so she intercepts a a lot of the work orders um, on the HVAC side to make sure that there just aren't weird anomalies in there, uh, controls locked up, you know, kind of think maybe save Ron from having to go troubleshoot a ghost. Um, and she popped up as one of our, uh, it's two hundred and fifty work orders right there, roughly. Upcoming challenges, I think everywhere you go, people talk about staffing. Um, our vacancies, our current vacancies, vacancies coming in the future. We're impacted as much as anybody else in the world. And let's get that first again. Uh, alternative solutions for completing work orders. We are actively engaged right now in discussions with um some of our engineering firms and others to figure out ways to have them be on our side, ready to respond to work that we can't get to. And frankly, electrical HVAC is probably our two biggest. Figuring out ways where they can get into our system, see no heat work orders and basically just respond without a phone call, just be there to do it. Um, there's gonna be costs to that. There's gonna be, you know, logistical challenges for that, but um, it's it's needed and uh, I'm confident we're gonna figure that out. Equipment lead times, I don't care what industry you're in right now, you can't find a part for anything in a reasonable amount of time. Um, sometimes you'll take subgrade parts, you know, or or things that are different, just modify them to make them work. Um, that's a time consuming thing as well and long term that doesn't work because the next guy has to figure out what you tried to figure out to make it right. I put these unfunded mandates in there. These are all state level mandates that are here. Last year we talked about it. I said they're coming. Um, we have to figure out how we're going to get the clean buildings um compliant, right? I mean, if we aren't compliant, we are spending money, big bucks to say we're sorry, we couldn't get there. Um, that's a huge one. Every professional organization in the school district world is trying to solve that problem now. And we're in the middle of that Marina and her team. Um, it's a lot of folks trying to figure out how we're gonna get there. Unfunded lead and drinking water. I hesitated putting that slide in there because I didn't want to be, oh, we have lead in our water. Um, frankly, we we don't have lead in our water. We have uh, two water purveyors in our district, city of Bonnie Lake, city of Sumner. They provide outstanding water. None of our facilities are old enough to have lead pipes. Uh, we don't have lead fixtures. Um, but that mandate directs us to test sample every fountain in the district that a student could potentially draw water from to consume. And think about that, it's a lot of sinks, it's a lot of fountains, it's 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 here, it's knocking on our doors. We're gonna, we have yet to figure out how that's gonna get done. Health department doesn't even know it's being shoved down their throat as well. And then the unfunded fire smoke damper legislation, these are led by other groups, people probably at one time thinking they were needing work and um, I don't want to call out any labor unions or trade unions, but the electricians are heavy, heavy um, pushes over initiatives that increase their workload, right? So um, at some point we were gonna have to, every HVAC system, you don't see them in the ductwork, but we have dampers that close when there's a fire or smoke, popcorn Friday, you know, trips to fire alarm. Um, we have dampers in the ductwork that are designed to close, stop the spread of smoke and fire. And uh, someday, we are gonna have to test every one of those on an annual basis. Thousands of them. And we don't know how we're gonna do that yet, but it, we'll figure it out. Uh, just a quick pie chart. Once I figured out how to do that, I love it. I want to get rid of it. It's a great little piece. It shows the the six big parts of our budget. Um, the number's down only forty thousand from last year. Um, because frankly, we found a little bit of money that shouldn't be in the maintenance budget. It can be used for for other cool stuff that we do. Um, I hated to let it go, wink wink, but um, it it was, it was the right thing to do. We try not to spend what we have and beg for more. We like to keep it within our pie, so. Um, the equity component is is always there. We we strive to provide barrier free access um, to our facilities for all students, staff and staff and guests. Um, I love the term barrier free. We are not gonna be a reason we can't teach our kids, right? There there's zero reason why they can't have access to healthy, safe, secure facility. And then uh, the partnerships we have, uh, listed quite a few on there, our technology family center, special services, child nutrition, transportation, all of them. We we can't do it without each other. And uh, it's great to be a part of the team uh, of that group. It's working well. I'm trying to keep that. I wonder if I didn't get the three minute timer, but we're past that. Indoor air quality improvements, you know, everybody's, you hear about the ester funds, the the Marina and Madison team, um, we have a lot of people working on on currently still identifying inefficiencies in our HVAC equipment. Identifying uh, areas that could be improved, whether it's indoor air quality, uh, temperature control, um, humidity control, all the above. Uh, we are spending a ton of energy and um, really good money smartly uh, to make those improvements. Um, I'm not, I mentioned Madison, she's our climate fellow. She is the one intercepting our, she is interpreting all of our utility bills, gas and electric and comparing that to our to our usage, you know, where are we using utilities that are costing the district money and helping us tighten that ship? She has, she has done so much work. And the cool thing is the people in maintenance operations have completely bought into that. We have an energy team. We meet uh, very regularly to go over our bills and talk about our findings in HVAC audits. The team buy in to the street, uh, to our strategic plan. It's nice when you have everybody on the team buying in to what we do. I encouraged all of our team to uh, visit an elementary school during a drop off one morning and just see the excitement in the air when the kids get to come to school and high fiving teachers, you know, the whole bit. And I had a few of them remind me, we see that every day, the grounds guys, you know, we have to stop our equipment when that happens. We we don't forget, we do see that. That's pretty awesome. Long range budget planning, I think um, many in this room will say we're still learning. We are learning how to, you know, we're trying to outfox the fox. Basically, we're trying to figure out when, how we can appropriately spend money, five, six years down the road. You know, we we can't always anticipate a boiler going out or a chiller going out, but we're trying our best to make it work. Partnerships are always a big one, internal, external. Um, all those groups we mentioned in our circle. And then all of our outside partners, vendors, et cetera. Um, I want to highlight our summer grounds workers. We were able to bring three people on over the summer just to do extra grounds work. The phone call changed really quickly from complaints to to sort of, you know, attaboys for the drastic improvement that was being made just by hiring some uh, three extra people for the summer. One of those turned into that fifth grounds worker, by the way, earned his spot. Student interns we're doing right now, we have six working at the secondaries, trying to get that seventh for Lakewood, but it's hard to find a T uh, teenager that young that can drive to and fro uh, Lakewood. Kind of on an island by themselves out there, by themselves. Um, and the the improvement in the grounds, I keep saying, you know, good equipment, good people, um, and doing the right thing, right, right folks in the right place. Um, I'll just highlight these real quick. These are always fun for me. Um, when you see these next couple like this. Um, I'll just highlight these real quick. These are always fun for me. Um, when you see these next couple like this, everything that's the bright blue is Sumner School District. Sumner Bonnie Lake, we, when we're doing work orders, we like accurate data. When somebody submits a work order, I want, we want a good description, good location, good. What is the problem? Where is the problem? Equipment information, whatever, because ten years from now we'll forget we worked on that. It's good to have that good data. The nation. The other bars are the Nate, the rest of the, uh, I don't know, fourteen thousand school districts using our work order system. We own that column, but I mean, this category, but we did tick up in every one of them. Number, percentage of work orders completed in less than a week. The black bar is where we are compared to the rest of the, the other fourteen thousand districts. Our value is fifty-five percent of all work orders are completed within seven days. Uh, I stood here before you a year ago saying we're going to get to sixty-four. We're going to get to the blue to the right. Frankly, we, we lost staff and, and our workload increased. We just aren't there. So I'm celebrating the two percent increase. We'll be up higher next time. And I think you remember, I said, I'm not sure how we get there, but I know we can because they do. Right? So we'll get there. Opportunities for improvement, real quick. Continued work in progress. Um, just, we have a lot of open work orders, a lot of deferred work happening right now. We every day have to prioritize what just isn't going to get done today. Um, what probably won't get done tomorrow, right? It's a hard way to start today. When you have people who are charged with, with taking care of the district, they have to decide what they can't do. That's kind of a hard thing to ask somebody to do every day, but we're doing it. Custodial help, increased demand. Um, we have after hours and weekend use, uh, our facility use has skyrocketed. We are at a higher level of facility use now than, excuse me, than we were pre-COVID. People are just begging for space to gather again, right? And they're coming to us looking for that, so. Increased recorder technician. I'll talk about that a little bit here coming up, but I mentioned it last time. If you see it, do it. If you see something, you're working on a unit here and you see a drip of water on a pipe over there, let's, let's get it captured. Let's put it in the work order system and deal with it. That doesn't happen as well as we'd like it to right now, and I'll, we'll talk about that. Uh, increased PM, always want to increase our preventive maintenance. Every piece of gear should have some work done on it. That's going to increase its life cycle, right? So we don't have to replace it as soon. Just let it hopefully get its full life out of it. Current and future staffing will always be a thing, you know, uh, the needs of our building are, are, are changing every day. And there's increased demands in all areas, um, for service in those buildings. Inventory management, um, it's good to know what we have in a warehouse. What, what do we have sitting? That's, that's money we spent. Where is it? Where is it going? How's it performing for the district? And with growth, with growth comes, uh, basically full warehouse, right? As we grow, we, we start pushing out the walls for, you know. Capacity is, is, is an issue. Um, and then always, you'll always see this on a slide if I'm talking about, um, our people is finding ways to get increased professional development. Where can we teach a custodian to be a better custodian, to maybe eventually be a supervisor? Where can we teach grounds and maintenance folks to be better grounds and maintenance folks? So they can increase their worth and their, their self-worth and their value to the district. I'll fly through these and we'll get their percentage of PM work orders completed in a month. This is preventive maintenance. This is big stuff, chillers, boilers and that. We are, our value is at eighty-six. You might ask why is that an area of improvement, eighty-six percent? Uh, we were at eighty, almost eighty-nine last year. That's a tick down that I anticipate is going to be next year when we're up here. If we don't fill our positions and really make a push to get those positions filled, that, that bar is going to slide left. We're anticipating that and that's the stuff we're trying to sort of fend off in, in getting programs in place. That'll help us with that. The goofy little slide, but I wanted to highlight, this is who creates the work orders. Um, the blue bar again, Sumner School, Sumner Bonnie Lake. Site administrators are our custodians. We choose to try to make every work order go through, uh, the custodians in the building. Let them have a shot at correcting whatever the issue is first. If it's something they can't correct, they submit the work order. When I said that see something, say something. I expected the technicians, they're at seven percent now. They were at ten percent last year. They are just running, they're running and gunning. They just can't capture everything that's coming at them. The custodians picked it up though. They were at sixty-seven, they're at seventy. So the three lost on one end with three to the other. I thought it was pretty cool. Custodians are aware and they're, uh, taking good care of us. I didn't want to end on a, what can we fix? So I wanted to remind us, everybody. We've all seen the hierarchy of needs, right? There are study after study that shows students perform better when the facilities, the environment they're in is safe, healthy and secure. No mistake. So I just love that part. I wanted to end on that. And with that, open up for questions.
Thank you, David.
Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Appreciate it as well. It's very, I hate to even say this, it's very easy to take, um, some of those things for granted, right? When things are looking beautiful and they're working the way they should, we just kind of go about our business. And then when they don't, all of a sudden the focus is on that. So we're really lucky to have beautiful buildings and facilities. Thanks to years history, a long history of, um, bonds being passed and voters really providing, um, some amazing things for our community and our children. I love the way that you are forward thinking and how can you be proactive in keeping our facilities working in and running order? You guys have an amazing, amazing team and seem to work together really well. So just appreciate all your work and, and all the things that we may take for granted. We really don't, but it's, it's, it can get easy because, um, we just kind of expect them to work, but we know that it's intentional and, and well thought out. So thank you. Okay. Thank you, David. All right. Next up for our presentations, we have a demographer report. Um, Shannon Bingham from, uh, Western Demographics will present an enrollment forecast to our board.
Part of the content and dance is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Shannon Burnham, uh, Burnham. And Mrs. Burnham's owns Western Demog- Demographics and will present our demographic study tonight. Shannon has been a school planner and demographer for forty years and has worked with over two hundred school districts. Mr. Burnham has been the planning director of two large school districts and is a education northwest alumnus. Most of his works in Colorado, Washington and Alaska. And he maintains the office in Fondale and Colorado. Shannon has been, has developed a presentations on our current demographics, which is you will see it tonight and is working with Pierce County and Brookfield priorities on the final phase of Tahale and understanding how it might impact our district.
Thank you, Ben. Well, good evening, everyone. It's going to be difficult to follow David. I thought I would have a really upbeat presentation and I think I'm already trumped, but, uh, anyway, um, uh, driving in here, I was really kind of impressed by the fact this is one of the first really positive demographic presentations I've been able to make in about three years, um, because of how well this district is doing. And I think once we get into some of the details, um, we'll kind of see that and I'll kind of add some, hang some ornaments on that tree as we go along. We haven't really been as affected by regional and national demographic trends that are happening as, as we exit the pandemic. A lot of districts around the west are down three percent, five percent, and they didn't get their kids back. And we did. Uh, we got all of them back. And this may be the only district I've worked with and I'm, I'm working with eighteen districts now and, uh, have worked with about thirty over the last three years and virtually no one got all their kids back. So, um, the, that's remarkable for this district. Housing costs here remain affordable. I think our housing is probably sixty or seventy percent of what it would cost in, um, Issaquah or Bellevue. I think that we're looking at providing really great family opportunities. Uh, the curb appeal of our buildings is amazing here. I think families come here, they see what they could purchase in the way of a home, what the schools look like, and they're saying, I'm all in. So, um, I think as we emerge from the interest rate crisis, we're going to be looking at some influx and, um, my numbers reflect that, uh, to a certain extent. We're expecting the interest rate situation to last for another eighteen months, probably. I think probably May of twenty twenty-four. The national business community will just have had enough of high interest rates. And I think that, um, that six months prior to the election, I think we'll see some sort of a policy change. And most of my friends in the banking, development, construction, and in the political world kind of concur, that's probably going to be the end of it. So we're expecting some sort of a change then. I'm forecasting us to grow, uh, in an accelerated way from one to three percent per year. As the housing market recovers, we'll start seeing Tahale really putting online a bunch of new housing. They're building vacant lots right now like crazy. Nationally, all of the builders in the country are building vacant lots. It's not a lot of new housing construction in all over Colorado, Alaska, uh, Western Washington that I'm most familiar with, um, Oregon, big parts of Idaho. It's just most, most developers and builders are focusing on vacant lot development because they're getting ready for interest rates to turn around. So we're really expecting, um, that kind of preparation to result in quite a bit of student growth. Um, we've been remarkably stable, given what we've been through. I think our housing is a well-kept secret that's about to be discovered because of what I, of what I'm seeing, uh, townhouse here for five forty is a million one in Issaquah. A home here that's six eighty is a million dollars in, um, Issaquah, uh, one point four billion, a million in Bellevue, maybe nine fifty in Lake Washington. So as I look around, yeah, the, the farther away you get from the space needle, the lower, um, uh, housing is in price. And also the higher the pandemic recovery is for school districts. So, um, that's kind of my introductory, uh, uh, issue nationally, a lot of the millennial age population group isn't having children at the rate of prior generations regardless of, uh, religious denomination. Pew Research shows about ten different religious denominations and child production in every category is down significantly. So we're seeing that nationally. People are just having smaller families. The school district seems remarkably immune from a lot of that. I see children everywhere I go. I see a lot of families really excited about this community. And I think things are really happening here. Uh, birth rates have gone down all over the state. Um, Pierce County is probably holding better than just about anybody. And so our, uh, birth rates have held up rather well. A lot of competition from online charters. Um, we don't seem to be as impacted by that as other districts have been. And also we don't seem to have a lot of private schools. So I think we're actually, um, really doing a great job retaining our enrollment. As far as the age groups that we have in the district, it's really remarkable, the number of preschool children that are on this twenty twenty population distribution. You can see we have about thirty-eight hundred preschoolers and then about thirty-nine hundred elementary age children. And then about thirty-seven middle school, thirty-seven hundred middle school age children on into high school. And you can see all four of those bars on the bottom of that graphic there line up perfectly with the adult childbearing age, which I call families. People leave us for college and careers in their early twenties to go to college elsewhere, but, uh, they're coming back and, um, we seem to have a really solid family population well represented by both children and adults in the, um, childbearing age range. As far as our population goes, we've grown by about, um, twenty-five percent over the last ten years, just the total population in the district, which is shown in that upper, uh, left-hand graphic. And I'm going to avoid the laser pointer lest I shut off power in the whole, uh, Southern Puget Sound region here. But, um, in that lower right-hand graphic, you can see that time to work. And probably fifty percent of our population in the school district and all this data is the school district boundary. Fifty percent of folks drive thirty minutes or more to work. So I think it's super convenient to get to big employers in Renton and, and Bellevue from here. I just think that's going to be super durable as we go by. I mean, I know all the sneaks, having worked in this area for a decade, but, you know, between, you know, sneaking up the East Valley Highway through Auburn and Kent and getting on Lake Washington Boulevard in Renton, I can be in Bellevue in about forty-five minutes. So if you know what you're doing, um, I don't think commuting out of this community is such a big deal during rush hour. And, um, everything else that it is convenient to, to the east of us and the south of us will continue to make Sumner Bonnie Lake a really attractive place to live and work and raise a family. Again, we've been immune to what's happening with Washington State school enrollment. You can see this big dip. I think three weeks ago, OSPI published their state data for twenty twenty-two. And it continues to be down, but not here. Um, and that's, uh, really remarkable and really, um, a testament to what you're doing here. Um, around the state charter and private schools are up, neighborhood schools are down. And everybody has lost enrollment to these other sectors of the market. And, um, I, those, uh, customers have stayed with those products, if you will. But not here. And I think that we have retained, uh, kids. We also have uh, two small church schools that are in the district. Well, I don't know what size those are. I didn't monitor their enrollment. But we don't have a whole lot of private schools in the district, so, uh, we continue to really be the main player with, um, providing education services in, in our geographic area. These are birth data here and you can see Pierce County is really kind of leveled off at about eleven thousand. And in that lower left-hand table, you can see how we compare to everybody else. And this, this is in reverse order. So twenty twenty is on the left side of that. But you can see King County sitting there with, I think, forty-five births per thousand moms and, um, our number is sixty-two point three. So even though, uh, King County, and again, closer you get to the space needle, we're getting beat up by family creation trends that are national. Uh, that's not happening in Sumner Bonnie Lake as readily as it is elsewhere. Our average grade size is up in almost every grade. Let me test that. It's up in every grade except, uh, the twelfth grade. Uh, you can see however, that some of those big grades are about to leave the system and they're going to be replaced by smaller grades. That's going to have a little bit of an impact on our high schools, but it's not going to be, uh, dramatic. And the backfilling effect of those bigger grades and grades, uh, one through eight is going to, um, continue to, uh, keep the district's grade configuration level. And we're going to continue to have, um, quite a bit of growth. Home sales average price five seventeen. I saw that. I go, where am I? Am I in, uh, uh, Dallas? Where am I? Uh, that's amazingly attractive. And I went around and verified that in the field, going to sales offices and looking at individual units that were available when I collected this data. But, um, that's a real price and people, um, closer to the space needle are seeing those kinds of numbers and say, yeah, maybe that thirty-five, forty-minute drive isn't so bad. And I think we're probably going to continue to get folks coming in. This is kind of an interesting graphic. On the top, we show the kids that are, the folks that are leaving us. And where are they leaving us for? Um, less And where are they leaving us for? Less expensive housing markets. So you're seeing Phoenix, Dallas, Las Vegas. And then you see kind of the four most popular affordable Washington housing markets, which are Spokane, Aberdeen, Ellensburg, and Wenatchee. And the people that are leaving Issaquah are also going to exactly those same places. On the bottom, you see the people that are coming to us, and every one of those is an expensive housing market. So you're seeing San Francisco, LA, Chicago, Portland, Washington DC, New York, Sacramento, Boston, San Diego. And it's not just five or ten people. It's hundreds and hundreds of people that are coming here from those housing markets and probably paying cash for houses. So I think that that gives us a little bit of insulation from interest rate problems. Anecdotally, that's what the sales agents are telling me, that they're having more cash buyers than at any point in their individual careers, with people coming to this community and paying cash for a house. Here's just some snapshots of some of our individual sales. You see some high spots there for high-end custom homes, waterfront homes. But for the most part, when I looked at this, I was in a state of disbelief as far as how affordable some of these brand-spanken new and newly renovated homes, how affordable they actually are. Oh, let's see, about two hundred homes were, are visible under construction or, or were for sale on the market in January of twenty-three. Interest rates are going to beat us up. Vacant lots under construction is the big news. There weren't a lot of homes under construction mid-winter, and most builders are waiting. So here's the big story. Tahale has this new, the southern part of their development is called Glacier Point, which is the perfect name for that area, given the fact it's all glacial. But all of that undeveloped area, those green areas that are north of the bright green line are in our district. This area is split with Orting, Orting School District. So it's split along section lines, which is really unfortunate because it doesn't coincide with anything, and it's going to be super awkward. So we've done a really nice job of balancing those three elementary attendance areas. We're starting to get a little bit lopsided, and I'll be working with Bang to talk with Brookfield Properties, try to understand what they have in mind for the future of that area. Should we be looking at adjustments or assigning new subdivision filings to schools that have room as we go along? Just to make sure that we can kind of anticipate what's going to happen as interest rate drops, interest rates drop, and the housing market starts to heat up again. So I'll be doing that in the tail end of my contract with the district. And I'm trying to get to the right person with Brookfield, and I continue to work on that. But I suspect that I'll have some really good follow-on information for you very soon. Fifteen hundred and eighteen homes divided between the two districts. If we got half of them, that would be about seven fifty. And the total student count there, that would be over a thousand kids, probably. So it's significant, K through twelve. If you look at the 2020 and 2021 rows in our history there, there's only four words to explain that. Winter, winter, chicken, dinner. Basically, we got everybody back. We lost six ninety-nine and got six eighty-eight back, and then we went right back to growing. Nobody did that. Nobody. So you guys were the poster child for pandemic recovery. Down below, you see my kind of reasonable recovery from the interest rate situation and a return to about two percent annual growth as we go forward. In the future, inching up into about two point eight by 2027. Here's the work that I've done, working with Bang on having headcount and FTE side by side. And then I, I'm working on pushing this into the individual schools. Here are all the individual schools. We still have some fine-tuning to do on some of these where there's a little bit of glitchiness, and I've got accounting issues with running Stark Kids in a few spots that I cleaned up. But this is just a detail. You can see our high school populations continuing to be somewhat comparable to what they have historically been as a result of big grades moving out and growth coming in. Little bit of spiking in some of our middle schools that we'll be having a look at. And that's my presentation. So I'd be delighted to respond to any questions that you might have. Hopefully, I was as upbeat as David. I don't know.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happen to say, as a parent, I would love a crystal ball, right? Like, if I knew how this was going to play out, I'd be better informed and be able to make better decisions. I feel like this is a little bit like a crystal ball. It maps it out and very informed math, I'm sure, that goes into all of this. But it's really valuable information for us to be able to plan and prepare for things that are coming to the system.
Thank you very much. I, I've done this for almost forty years. This is my forty-year anniversary for doing this kind of work. So I've kind of seen a lot of these downturns and recoveries and downturns and recoveries. And I've looked at so many houses and so many schools. I can tell you how old the school is within three years, and I can tell you how old the house is within about five. So this community is really very much on an upswing. And the schools that we have that are older buildings, they just look great from the street. I mean, everything that you're doing here with maintenance and operations is impressive. And I'm working in another district, and right now that I cannot get them to understand the value of curb appeal. And when every child walking in the door has ten thousand dollars in their front pocket, and they're making a decision based on, you know, is this a quality setting for my child? That's a really important piece. And you guys really do a great job of that. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Should have had you earlier in the meeting. Okay. We have a couple of pieces for information only in your packet. Asset preservation, safety task force update, March change order report. Change order report. And that leads us to board discussion. Anyone have anything for discussion this evening? Yeah, no, my hands weren't working. Thank you. So for board discussion, I would like us to consider or entertain the idea, whether it be a policy or a board principle, that we limit board comments and board discussion to no more than three minutes per person. And I had wanted to do this for a while, and it's not reflective of the brilliance or like anything that people might have said tonight because I already discussed some of this with some of our board members already. And I just think it's a respectful thing, and I think it's courteous to the rest of, not just the staff, it's courteous to the board members, and for anybody else that's in the audience. I think to sit through a very long discussion from just one person sometimes makes it a little lopsided. And I, I don't know if this is something that a policy, maybe we entertain, or if it's just something if you're interested to be part of our board principle. I just thought maybe I'm opening up the discussion.
I'd just like to say, it really could be either or, but wherever we put something like that, we should be consistent. I would say in a, if it was part of the protocol or, or our practices, it would be a little more flexible instead of a dinger and a buzzer. If it's, if it's in the policy, it's probably going to be more, more rigid. It would, might have to be enforced by the president at the time, or the president would remind some of us of the problem as we go along. But opened up, it could go either, either place.
Practice, I think. It's definitely worthy of conversation and thought, and so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I would agree. I would like to see something like that.
What, before, you, you, you want something more flexible or you want something more rigid?
What Deb proposed, I'd like to see something that has the, I would say, more in our, you know, in our board principles would be probably the ideal place as a, as a board to give us that direction. You know, out of respect for the fact that we have time limits on what the public comment can be. And I think that anything that the board has to, to talk about or mention should be thought out in a way that can be summarized and, and done in a succinct way instead of a very lengthy speech about anything in particular.
I think our board principles right now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a procedure. So it actually just is adding some kind of language to that, to the procedure, and then having a reading of it. It's not so. But yeah, procedure would be quick and easy. And I think sometimes a procedure can be, it's still effective, but it's a little soft.
Any other board discussion?
No, I just appreciated all the presentations tonight. I appreciate the, the district and, and what it does when disseminating out our strategic plan to all staff members and everybody in the community. Because like that strategic plan, I firmly believe in knowing, valuing, and supporting all students. All students.
Thank you, Kevin. I have to be honest, I, I've, I wrote some things down, and then I scrapped them, and then I rewrote them. And I had, I had lots of things on my heart and on my mind, especially in the last month. I've had lots of conversations with people in the district. I've had lots of conversations with my friends. I've had lots of conversations with kids, some principals. And I just want to be very crystal clear. As a school board, we are committed to our promise. Committed to our promise to know, value, and support every child in this district. Every child. I also want to read something that's been on my heart and on my mind. The last month, I recently listened to a book, and in the author's notes, it said, "We are all flawed, complicated, wounded dreamers. We have more in common with one another than we don't. Sometimes making the world a better place just involves creating space for the people who are already in it." Any further discussion?
I'll just, like, because we, this is based off of last week, or I'm sorry, not, not last month. No, I think it was last week, right? No, it was last week because you had asked for a policy, you guys wanted some. So one has been introduced. Others will be introduced too, I'm sure. But it is a process, so give some time. It's not going to be anything fast, but we're working on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, our board meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, April nineteenth, 2023, and will begin at six PM in the central office boardroom. Meetings adjourned.